Mayor, at 6:30, would you like me to start the meeting?
Yes, please.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. It's 6:30 and I am calling the meeting to order. First, some housekeeping. Go-to webinar transcripts of council meetings are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple app or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. Given the global COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being conducted both telephonically and in person. Members of the City Council and staff may be participating either in person or telephonically. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov or in-person, Main Auditorium, South Close Air Quality Management District. We've also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m. and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 p.m. and archived for viewing on the city's website. First, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation and roll call. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Andrew Chau, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Deacon L. Guerrero of St. Dennis Catholic Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of its lands, one nation and one home, indivisible, ever being just as.
O heavenly Father, I thank you for this meeting of the City of Diamond Bar Council. May you bless the agenda that we are about to discuss. Please send down your abundant blessings on our mayor, city council members, and the entire staff of the City of Diamond Bar. Give safe travels to everyone that drives through our beloved city. Send your grace on our sheriff deputies, firefighters, and paramedics, and keep them safe from harm. Give praise to all our veterans of the armed forces. May our discussions today be fruitful, conductive, and compelling for all the citizens of Diamond Bar. We ask this from our heavenly Father. Amen.
Thank you, Deacon Guerrero. Please be seated. Ms. Santana, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Liu?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chow?
Here.
Mayor Lo?
I'm here as well. Thank you. We have a quorum. We met this morning, this afternoon, beginning at 5:30 for a closed session. Mr. Fox, are there any reportable items?
There are no reportable actions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fox, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Then the agenda is hereby approved. So this evening, we have a special meeting. Well, not a special meeting. We have three very special items on the agenda. The first is the Through My Lens Photo Contest, and we're going to be announcing those winners. So I'm going to invite my colleagues to join me below on the dais, and we will announce that fun event, okay? All right, thank you. All right, I think we're all set. We're organized now. Okay, our special presentation tonight is the long-awaited announcement of the winners of our annual Through My Lens Photo Contest for 2022. Tonight, we're very fortunate to be joined by two members of the Diamond Bar Community Foundation, and that is President Camille Jones, oops, and Advisory Board member John Forbing. I did not know that. Well, congratulations, Vice President. Okay. The foundation is our photo contest cosponsor, and it's there, and we thank them for their support that we are able to award monetary prizes to our winners. We appreciate the foundation for its continuous support of this contest, and we thank them for providing the extra funding this year in order to recognize five additional honorary members. I'm sorry, honorary recipients. Our annual Through My Lens Photo Contest has reached its 14th anniversary and has served as a great way to capture great moments in Diamond Bar. The contest, as you know, is open to all Diamond Bar residents of all ages, and there are five categories: people, pets, places, nature, and digitally altered. Winning entries are sometimes featured in city and foundation publications, websites, and marketing materials. Also, the entry that receives the highest rating overall takes the grand prize of an additional certificate and cash prize, and their photo becomes part of the permanent exhibit that is located on the first level of the City Hall building.
Great. And so this year's contest, we actually received over 126 entries, making the judgment process especially difficult. So we'll start with the winners in the youth division. Our first winner goes to Erica Liang for the entry "My Friend Jacob" in the people's category, and she unfortunately cannot be with us today, and that's her photo. But we'll make sure that she gets her award and check. So if she's not here, but clap, 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 clap. Thank you. Next, we have the honorable mention, and in this category goes to Elise Wong for the submission "A Colorful Concert in the Park," and Elise is here with us.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, thank you.
Do we take a photo or?
Afterwards.
Thank you.
Stay right there.
Stay right there.
Yeah, stay right there.
And now we have the winner in the places category goes to Christine Singson for the entry title "Another Restless Night." Congratulations. And one more. The honorable mention goes to the youngest recipient of the contest, Iris Guo. She's only seven, I believe, for her entry "Sunset at Lockstone Park."
You're so cute. Here, that's yours. Congratulations.
My daughter has the same jacket from Target. Now I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Tai.
Thank you. You know, could the foundation pay her by the pound? Would that be all right? No? All right, never mind. Continuing the pets category, the winner is Caitlin Qui for the entry "Aiden Dog." Okay, that's great. You'll see that she gets that. Thank you very much. The honorable mention, very exciting. This goes to Megan Tran for her submission "Living the Life." Congratulations. The honorable mention goes to Elise Wong for the submission "The City's Good Night." Oh, I did. I'm sorry. How long have we been doing this, JR? Here you go. All right, and let's see if I can get back on. In the nature category, the winner was Jeremy Han for his entry "Under the Sunshine." He's not with us tonight. You saw me file that up. Honorable mention went to Elise. We have an additional honorable mention in the pets category, and it goes to Alan Ong, and his entry "Autumn Leaves." There you go. Did you get your certificate? In the last category, excuse me, in the youth division, digitally altered, the winner again is Jeremy Han for his entry "A Morning Lovely Bird." We'll see that he gets his two awards. And finally, the honorable mention goes to Grace Lee Awet Tidui for the entry "Rose of the Country," and Grace could not be with us. Thank you very much, and I will turn this over to Councilmember Lyons.
Okay, now we have the adult division, and we start with the people category, and our first winner is Hai Tao Awu for his creative entry "Catch the Sun." The honorable mention in this category belongs to Hector Carmona for his entry "To Have and to Hold." Oh, do you know that couple? Very nice. Okay, on to the winner for the places category. Leonardo Sing Sung earned the spot for his entry "The Trail is Calling and I Must Go." Is that not Brian?
What was his name?
Oh, I am sorry. Brian is not here. Okay, so are you Leonardo? Okay, well, let's do you since we announced you. Okay. This is Leonardo. Okay, and I missed this one. An additional honorable mention goes to Brian Thomas for his entry "A Breath of Fresh Air," and he is not present, but let's give him a hand. Okay, honorable mention in this category was captured by Lena Cardenas and her entry "Welcome Home." Lena?
Lena? Lena Cardenas?
This is a lot harder than it looks, folks. Is that Brian Thomas? He's not here. In the pets category, we recognized Angelo Samos for his adorable photo titled "Pantera Pub Patrol." Honorable mention recognition belongs to Long Pham for his entry "She Said What?" But I understand he's not here, but you could give him a hand. Okay, and an additional honorable mention goes to Joe Nakiisha for his entry "A Cat's Life." Thank you. And back to Mayor Lo.
All right, in the nature category, Dan Qinghua is the winner for this picture "Crying Baby Gets Milk." Congratulations. We also have three honorable mentions, with the first going to Sonam Metta for the entry "Morning Dew." Sonam is not available, is not able to join us this evening. The second recipient is Sandra Dulebone for her entry "Busy Bee on Lavender." The third recipient is Michelle Kang for her entry "After Rain." In our final category, digitally altered, Kevin Chang gets the top spot for this very creative photo entitled "Blood Moon Rising on Diamond Bar."
Wow, congratulations. Beautiful.
The honorable mention in this category is this image by Tony Wu titled "Sunset Stroll."
So nice.
Now for the entry that garnered the highest marks. This year's grand prize goes to Kevin Chang for "Blood Moon Rising on Grand Avenue." Our next presentation is a proclamation of Small Business Saturday. As you know, Diamond Bar is very supportive and encourages all of our residents to support our local businesses specifically and particularly during the holiday season. So in support of that, we have made a small business proclamation, and I'll read that and share it with my colleagues. Whereas Diamond Bar City Council celebrates our small businesses and the contributions they make to the local economy and our community.
And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States, which together are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and?
Whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, with 70% reporting the day makes them want to encourage others to support independently owned retailers, and 66% reporting the day makes them want to shop small all year long, and?
Whereas 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small business or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in 2021, and?
Whereas the City of Diamond Bar is pleased to join other public agencies and private organizations nationwide in endorsing the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. So now, therefore, the Diamond Bar City Council hereby proclaims November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community and communities around the country to support small businesses on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Now, to really bring it home to Diamond Bar, I'm going to turn it over for a special Small Business Saturday ideas.
Really special. Last year, I started thinking about how we could better support our small businesses in Diamond Bar. They really do need our help. And so I went around town, and I bought a lot of different small things to put in Christmas stockings, and it worked well. So this year, I started thinking about doing something a little bit bigger and talking to you all about it. So I went to Ken's Hardware or Ace Hardware, right, depending upon how long you've lived in Diamond Bar, and I had the manager Brad pull out some different things that you can think of buying and putting in your Christmas stockings or for Christmas gifts. Now, my council members have seen all of these, and they've laughed quite a bit, but I'm going to make them also introduce at least one item. So, one thing that I bought last year, and I put in several Christmas stockings, was a tape measure. It was very, very handy, especially when you've got, you know, younger people that are measuring either a dorm room or their bedroom or something, you know, at their new house. So this is a good one. Oh, and these items are all less than $35, and most of them are less than 15, and?
I get to pick anything I want? Okay. Whereas, correct. I thought this was priceless. It's a nose hair trimmer. You know what? I got that mixed up. It's a cordless rechargeable screwdriver, almost as useful. I don't have a stocking that would fit in.
Well, I know that I love gardening, and I know we have many gardeners in Diamond Bar. So look at this. You can't go wrong with not just one, but two trowels, and not only that, one of these things, scraper things, so you can, so you can, you can, you can, you know, dig a hole or plant your seeds. But it's essential that you keep your hands nice and soft with these nice gloves. And look at, the gloves are plastic on one side, so you can work on wet soil and watering and all of that. So the gardeners in your family would really love to have in their stocking gardening stuff.
Feel like we're on an episode of Price is Right. Especially if they're little ones. I got a five-year-old daughter, so especially got little ones. These are essential items for your socks. It's a box cutter. Especially comes in handy.
Actually, with all the gifts that all of us get from Amazon and other places during the holidays, that box cutter is really invaluable. I also gave three or four of those out last year, and people did like them. So just real quick to go through the rest of it, they have, you know, rubs you can use for your barbecue, screwdrivers in lots of sizes, insulated cups. This is good. Handsome Man Travel Kit. So I'm sure everybody, males in your life, would like that. And then finally, if you do do the gardening, perhaps you need the knee pads. So anyway, the whole point of this, and just a little bit of humor, is just to, you know, really think about how we can give back to our small businesses. We need them here in Diamond Bar, and if we buy things from them, Small Business Saturday and otherwise, it's going to really help them. It'll help them stay, you know, profitable and help keep them here. So thank you.
And not only that, you would save gas because you don't have to drive so far. So every penny saved is a penny earned. So please shop Diamond Bar. All right. So the next presentation is a wrap-up of Restaurant Week, so I'm going to turn this over to our city manager.
Well, thank you all. We're here to wrap up Restaurant Week, which was at the beginning of October. All the restaurants were able to participate, and everybody that went to a restaurant turned in the receipt. They were entered into a raffle drawing. So with that, we have a bin of raffle entries. We have some prizes. Our third prize, I'm going to ask one of the council members to come up and pick a name. We have a $50 gift certificate for Encore. Doris Wan is the winner of a $50 gift certificate to Encore. The second prize winner is an air fryer. And all of these prizes are sponsored by the Regional Chamber of Commerce for San Gabriel Valley. Anthony Duarte could not be with us this evening, and the winner is Toni Moreno. Toni Moreno is a winner of an air fryer. And for the grand prize winner, a 55-inch smart TV by Samsung. You cannot pick your own. One more? There you go. How's that? And the winner is Peggy Langen, Peggy Langen, winner of the 55-inch TV. So thank you all for participating. It was certainly a lot of fun getting out there to all the restaurants and visiting everybody, and we'll continue to do that again next year. Thank you, Mayor. Council?
Okay, now we are on to item number two of our agenda, city manager reports and recommendation. Mr. Fox, are there any reports for this evening?
No additional reports or recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Item number three brings us to public comments. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no actions on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first. Then, City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining the teleconference who may wish to speak under public comments. I have one public comment from Ms. Cynthia Yu. Welcome, Ms. Yu.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of city council, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. This month, Diamond Bar Library and Diamond Bar Friends of the Library are sponsoring many activities based on these years' Read Together Diamond Bar book selections. We have Wild Bird by Wendellin Van Drenen for adults and teens, and The Bad Sea by Jory John for children. Please join us this Thursday, November 17th at 11:00 a.m. for a special pressed flower lantern program for adults. We will bring some auto beauty inside by creating a lovely lantern using pressed flowers and the imagination. On Thursday, November 17th at 4:00 p.m., we'll read and discuss the Read Together Diamond Bar Children's Book Selection, The Bad Sea. Children will decorate their own positive-thinking jar after the discussion. Want to be better prepared for your next hiking or camping adventure? Teens will learn the many uses and benefits of paracord, and then how to make their own paracord on Friday, November 18th, from 3:30 to 4:30 p.m. And last but not the least, on Saturday, November 19th at 2:00 p.m., please join us as we meet the award-winning author, Wendellin Van Drenen. She'll discuss her highly acclaimed book, the Read Together Diamond Bar Book Selection of the Year, Wild Bird, and talk about her writing process and inspiration. The award ceremony for the How a Book Changed My Life essay contest will follow. This program is sponsored by the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library, and please visit our website, awcountylibrary.org for additional program information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yu. Is anyone else in the audience wishes to make a public comment? Okay, I don't see anyone. And Ms. Santana, I'll turn it over to you to see if there's anyone at home.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were no emails submitted for public comment tonight, but if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to of our program. I will unmute callers on the line one at a time. You will notice your turn to speak when I announce your name, and you hear a recorded message state unmuted. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Last call. Last call for public comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period for this evening. Moving over to item number four, we have the schedule of future events. Let me turn that over to you, Mr. Fox.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the scheduled events, we have Coffee with a Cop will be held on Tuesday, November 22nd, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Paris Spaghetti in the Plaza at Diamond Creek, which is the center at the corner of Golden Springs and Brea Canyon. The Planning Commission will meet Tuesday, November 22nd at 6:30 p.m. This will be a virtual meeting only. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 24th, which is Thanksgiving, has been canceled, and city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 25th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. There will be a windmill lighting event to help create some holiday cheer. This new event is cosponsored by the city and the Diamond Bar Community Foundation. It'll be held at the Walmart Market Parking Lot at the corner of Diamond Bar Boulevard and Grand on Sunday, December 4th, 5 to 6 p.m. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 6th, at 6:30 p.m. here at the AQMD Auditorium. That concludes the schedule of events.
Great, thank you. Let us move then to item number four, which is the consent calendar. Let me turn that back over to you, Mr. Fox. I'm sorry, item number five.
On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the minutes from the November 1st meeting, ratification of the check register dated October 26th through November 8th, approval of the treasurer's statement for October 2022, adoption of Resolution 2022-55, providing for the continued use of teleconferencing options pursuant to AB 361, adoption of Resolution 2022-56, approving amendments to the City of Diamond Bar Fringe Benefits Plan, approval of a budget adjustment with an appropriation and increase in program revenue related to recreation contract classes, approval of a construction contract with Eunix for the LED illuminated street name sign and highway safety light replacement project, including an appropriation in Measure M funds and making an environmental determination, adoption of Resolution 2022-57, approving final map 82066 for the Brea Canyon Business Park, including approval of a subdivision agreement and making an environmental determination, approval of a franchise agreement with Focus Media Group for the replacement and maintenance of bus stop shelters and amenities citywide, includes, including the administration of bus shelter advertising program and making an environmental determination. And finally, approval of a notice of completion for Area 1 residential street rehabilitation and arterial street rehabilitation project on Golden Springs between Brea Canyon and Lemon. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone have any items they wish to pull on the consent calendar? Let me just ask Councilmember Liu, who's on, on, on the line. Councilmember Liu, is there any, are there any items that you wish to pull?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here on council? Or would there be a motion?
Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Lyons. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. A second by Mayor Protem Andrew Chow. Ms. Santana, can you help us with the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chow?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that brings us to item number six, which is, there are two items under public hearings. Item number 6.1 is the adoption of the 2022 California Building Standards Code with, let me just read the whole thing. Adoption of the 2022 California Building Standards Code titled 24 CCR Parts 2, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, and 11, with local amendments. Mr. Fox, let me turn that over to you.
I'm going to ask our contract building official, Raymond Tao, to make the staff presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Tao?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight's request is to have the second reading and the public hearing for the Building Code ordinance. Last council meeting, we had approved the ordinance for first reading and removal of an error in the findings portion. We removed the error in the ordinance that has the error portion for the finding portion. And then, this ordinance is a restatement of the Building Code amendments approved three years ago, with inclusion of expedited electric vehicle charger requirements. The request is to have the public hearing and receive public comment, approve for second reading by title only, and adopt the ordinance 03-2022. And I think I have to read the entirety of the ordinance, the long version. It's an ordinance of the city council of the City of Diamond Bar amending Title 15 of the Diamond Bar City Code and adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Code, volumes 1 and 2, including Chapter 1, Division 2, and appendices I and J thereto, the 2022 California Mechanical Code, and appendices thereto, the 2022 California Plumbing Code, and the appendices thereto, and the 2022 California Electrical Code, and the appendices thereto, the 2022 California Residential Code, including appendices H, J, K, and O thereto, the California Fire Code, including Chapters 1 through 80, appendices OP, Q, and R, and the 2022 California Green Building Code without the appendices thereto, and Title 26 of the Los Angeles County Building Code with the Uniform Housing Code, together with certain amendments, additions, deletions, and exceptions. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Before we ask you questions, let me just open up this item to, for public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment with regard to this item? Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to make a public comment. Ms. Santana, anyone on the phone?
Madam Mayor, there were no emails submitted for this item, and there's no one joining this teleconference at this time.
Okay, thank you. So I would therefore close the public comment section. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Councilmember Tai?
I have no, I have no questions. I'm, I'm willing to make the motion for adoption of item 6.1, the 2022 California Building Standards Codes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Tai. Let me ask Councilmember Liu, who's on the line, whether or not he has any questions before we take a second on this.
I don't have any questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you care to make a second on this?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Tai, and a second by Councilmember Liu. Ms. Santana, would you help us with the, with the vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chow?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that brings us to item number 6.2, and this is amendments to Title 5 and Title 22 of the Development Code, the Diamond Bar Municipal Code to clarify the existing prohibition on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. Mr. Fox, let me turn that over to you.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to ask our associate planner, May Nakajima, to make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Lo, and members of the city council. This code amendment would amend the definition section in Title 22 and add a new section called short-term rentals to Title 5 to clarify the existing prohibition on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. This code amendment would apply citywide. So what is a short-term rental? It is a residential dwelling unit or any portion thereof that is rented out for lodging for a period of less than 30 days. Airbnb, Verbo, among other sites, have become very popular lately and provide a convenient way for homeowners to advertise their short-term rentals worldwide. Many travelers are now using them in lieu of more traditional options such as hotels Consequently, many communities, including Diamond Bar, are experiencing the impacts in residential neighborhoods. Some of these include noise, lack of parking, or residents feeling unsafe when strangers are often seen coming and going, visitors may leave behind excessive trash, and sometimes owners won't take care of their property since they don't reside there. Additionally, if homes are being used for rentals, they are no longer part of our housing stock, which can affect rental prices and housing affordability. Lastly, if short-term rentals are replacing traditional commercial lodging, it puts a strain on the city's fiscal health because they don't pay transient occupancy tax even though they place an added burden on public services. Just to clarify, short-term rentals have always been prohibited in residential zones in, within the city, as they are classified in the same way as a hotel or motel, which is a facility being rented for fewer than 30 days and is not in allowed use in residential zones. Because it has been difficult to enforce, the city council directs its staff to identify potential solutions to address the issue. So within the ordinance, the terms short-term occupancy and short-term rental are introduced to Title 22 for clarification purposes, and to expressly state that they are prohibited in all zoning districts. With the addition of these terms, it will no longer be necessary to rely on the definition of hotel to assert that they are illegal in the city. This new section in Title 5 expressly states that it is not only a violation to operate a short-term rental, but also illegal to advertise. Prohibiting advertising will serve as a powerful enforcement tool for the city because while it may be difficult to prove that a home is being rented out, it will be very easy to prove that it's being advertised, such as on Airbnb. And the city will be able to prosecute on that basis alone. This should serve as a deterrent by placing would-be violators on notice that the mere act of advertising is a misdemeanor offense. On October 25th, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance, and staff is recommending to waive full reading and introduce first reading of ordinance number 04-2022, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Diamond Bar, California, adding Section 5.08.050, short-term rentals of Title 5, and amending Section 22.80.020, definitions of specialized, specialized terms and phrases of Title 22 Development Code of the Diamond Bar Municipal Code to clarify the existing prohibition on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, and schedule a second reading and adoption at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Great report. Let me, before we, again, before we have questions for staff, let me open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, let me turn it to Ms. Santana. Anyone on, on the phone wishing to make a public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. There were no emails submitted for this item, and there's no one on the teleconference at this time.
Okay, so therefore I will close the public comment, public comment or public hearing section of, for this item. And let me bring it back to council for comments and questions. Councilmember Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Nakajima, who, who will be responsible for monitoring advertising? How will we track that?
Code enforced, our neighborhood improvement officers would be enforcing that.
So, does, does somebody in the neighborhood have to complain and say, "We saw this," or, or is somebody at City Hall going to be on top of this?
They could monitor the websites along with receiving complaints. They can look into it further.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor. I just am curious, is there any way to also find the Airbnb or the VRBO people as opposed to just finding the owner of the property?
Yes, if I may have Mr. DeBarry, or Director Dublin?
The, no, it's already been adjudicated that the short-term rental platform operators are not responsible for abiding by local regulations.
Too bad, thank you.
Mayor Protem, questions?
Yes, question. I assume it does, but I want to clarify that there are also websites out there where residents can list their pools and rent them out for just hours at a time, or is that also included in this ordinance to be prohibited?
No, that was not contemplated under this ordinance.
Well, something to look into, because there are websites out there that rent out pools for, for just several hours for a backyard party. We'll probably need to include that in this as well.
Okay. I, I think we could craft some language that says a residence or portion thereof, we just need to be mindful of ADUs and make sure that the distinction is, is, is composed in the language to, to be clear.
Thank you. Yeah, there, yeah, on the website, I think it would be pretty clearly stated that's a certain house for the pool for certain hours, this is a price, so that's something for our attorney to work on. Thank you.
Mr. DeBarry, I think you need to make a comment. Are you getting ready to make a comment?
Well, in, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, so whether it could be short-term, is it, is that an issue in Diamond Bar that we're aware of? If it does become an issue, you can always amend the ordinance. But then you, there's other, and I wasn't aware of the short-term rentals of pools, I haven't seen that, but there may be other types of short-term rentals of the house for a wedding or things like that. So typically, city adopts ordinances when, when a problem arises, and if that becomes an issue in Diamond Bar, it's certainly something we can look into. I have not seen an ordinance that prohibits short-term rentals of pools, so that'll be a challenge. We'll take a look at that one. If, if, again, do we know if that's a particular problem in Diamond Bar right now?
I mean, not widespread, I wouldn't think, but that it's, that it's available. I think it's only a matter of time, someone start complaining about a neighbor having wild party on the weekends for a few hours, you know, I foreseeably that can happen. I foreseeably that can happen.
Yeah, I know we've had, well, those party issues have been associated also with the short-term rentals as well. But yes, okay. Thanks.
Well, let me just take that, the next part of that question is that if we were to contemplate adding the pool as, as an additional prohibited rental, so to speak, would, um, would the language as presented today need to be modified? Or can we not do the second hearing? Or do we mod, or do we amend it at this point in time?
My thought would be just to go forward with the ordinance as it is rather than try and modify it because then we'd, we might have to reset this for another hearing for the first reading. Um, and it would be hard to modify it on the dais anyway. What I would suggest is go ahead and let's adopt this. And then if, if there is a problem associated with other types of short-term rentals of any type of facility in a residential structure, then we can take a look at that. And we may not want to just look at it to pools. But again, it depends on what the nature of the problems are.
Are you satisfied with that, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, but I guess you're saying that's difficult too. Well, I, I, I think if we vote on this today, knowing that there's still this issue out there, we'll have to revisit that anyway at some point. Would it make more sense for staff to redraft the language, bring back your planning commission so we can just get it done, do it right the first time?
Well, I, I think it, I think what we'd have to look at is, one, I said it would be difficult and impossible to wordsmith on the dais right here. So if you did that, then you would be pushing back the, the specific short-term prohibition that we have now. And, and, you know, as it was indicated before, we've always had a prohibition on short-term rentals in an indirect way. But what this does, it also adds a violation for the advertising. So my thought was let's go ahead and get this in place now because I think it's gonna take a little more work to figure out how to Sure. prohibit short-term pool rentals, if you will. Because that, like you said, that'll have to go back through the planning commission, and that would just delay this ordinance by several months.
And Mr. Goodman?
Yes, Mayor Liu. If, if it helps move this along, I should also let you know that, um, the planning staff is working on a code cleanup where we amend various sections of the Development Code and other sections of the Municipal Code just to, uh, uh, update outdated provisions or to, um, modify, um, regulations as a result of new legislation. So as part of that code cleanup, we could, um, take a look at this, um, specific topic and make it part of that code cleanup.
You know, it could be pools, it could be backyard play equipment, and who knows what else people have in their houses that they would like to rent out to other people by the hour. So, um, Mayor Pro Tem, are you okay with the suggestion? Okay, good. Uh, Mr. DeBarry, the, the, um, the language as proposed, we're legally on sure foot with it?
Yes, there's, there's very similar ordinances. And in some cities, they've been very controversial, like especially destination cities for, like Anaheim, when they enacted a short-term prohibition that generated a lot of public comment. There was some lawsuits and ultimately, but, but ultimately, the city of Anaheim did adopt the short-term rental. So, you know, these ordinances have been challenged and, and survived.
And, and have, do you know of any convictions for violations of the advertising, um, portion of the, um, the amendment? And have those been upheld?
Actually, I, I certainly do. In fact, a friend of mine, and I won't name names, asked me to help them because they were being prosecuted in Rancho Mirage because they were advertising for a short-term rental, even though they never actually rented their, their place on a short-term basis. Um, and Rancho Mirage had some really significant penalties. Had, they're, they had a $5,000 penalty. But, um, yeah, they've been, they've been tested in, in Garden Grove. I know there's been some code enforcement with respect to advertising. And the reason we can't enforce it against the, the vendors or the, um, online companies is because, as Greg indicated, there was some court decisions on that. And those types of, um, impositions of penalties on the online advertisers were held to violate the Interstate Commerce Clause. So that's why we can't enforce it against them.
I had another question. Let me ask if Councilmember Liu, who's on the phone, whether or not he has any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I do have a question regarding the violation for online advertising. If that comes as to a, a violation, what determines if it's really the homeowner or, or there are times that could be somebody else putting that listing on there? How do we determine that?
So the way the ordinance reads is it could be either the property owner or their agent. So it could be the, so for instance, some, sometimes people will retain a property manager in, in order to try and rent their place out, and they'll, they'll be the ones that are advertising, our VRBO. But to Councilmember Liu's point, what about the situation where somebody, some third party that's not associated with the property owner does the advertising? That would be a defense for the property owner, but I'm not aware of those situations occurring, although we have had, I think there have been situations where people have bought, essentially bought properties that, or sold properties they didn't own. So it's not without, you know, the realm that it couldn't happen. But I think those instances are gonna be rare. But the property owner would certainly be provided an opportunity to show that they did not advertise. And typically, the way you find out about property owners' advertising is the fact that they actually have a short-term rental. A neighbor complains, and then we can go back and at that point in time, check and see if there was an advertisement or, on VRBO. So the likelihood of a third independent party trying to, you know, rent out a place that they don't own or, or rent is kind of gonna be small. But that would be certainly a, a defense if, if the property owner or their agent wasn't involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeBarry.
Any other questions, Councilmember Liu?
Uh, that's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I remember what my question was. Um, on, on the prosecution of this ordinance, is it required that the homeowner receive a notice of violation or a citation from the city prior to us enforcing this, um, this ordinance?
It's, it's not required, but that's typical. I think it all depends on the situation. So most code enforcement action is, is generally the goal of the city is just to obtain compliance with its codes and not necessarily to punish people. But on the other hand, if, if the, the same person received a notice of violation, and then two months later, they're renting the place out again, maybe they don't receive a notice this time, and maybe the city just, you know, files some misdemeanor action against them. And sometimes you have to do that because obviously the notice of violation didn't work and the, the lure of, you know, the money that's involved in, in renting, renting out on short-term rentals makes them, you know, take that risk once again. So I think, but typically, if the property owner says, oh, you know, "I won't do that again," you might give them a second chance, but not a third.
Okay. And, and the, the penalty for this is $1,000 a day? And, and is this a continuing $1,000 per day at, on the, on the, as advertised, or how does that work?
It, it can be. So it's the maximum fine, and I know you're familiar with that. It doesn't mean that that maximum fine is gonna be imposed. But, um, under state law, violation of a, a city's ordinances is punishable by a maximum fine of $1,000 per day per violation or six months in jail. Rarely do people go to jail for code enforcement violations. Um, and the city prosecutors also have, um, the discretion to, they're, they're called wobblers. So they can actually prosecute them as infractions, which have a, a smaller penalty. And again, I think the city prosecutor would use his or her discretion to see if the property owner is actually remorseful about, you know, doing it. And if, in those types of situations, because typically, you don't want to get a misdemeanor on somebody's record if they're not a career criminal, right? So, um, the city prosecutor would exercise some discretion, and they'd probably talk to community development about that particular situation as well.
Okay, so this is a wablet then, as they say?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, would there be a motion with regard to this item?
Mayor, I'd, I'd make a motion that, um, we approve this. It was one of the, um, topics at our candidate forum, and I appreciate how quickly staff got after it and, and has this in order so that we can, uh, do away with this. So I would, uh, make a motion that amendments to Title V and Title 22 of the Municipal Code clarifying existing prohibition on short-term rentals be passed.
Mayor, I'll second it, and I'm also so happy about this. I've heard from residents over the years that are so unhappy when somebody rents out their house for a weekend and all the noise and trash and everything else that comes with it. So I, I really, again, I appreciate staff doing this so quickly. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Ms. Santana, would you help us with the vote, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chow?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes, thank you. The vote passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm really pleased that we are, uh, working on this issue, and I think this is something that, um, our residents have, um, have asked for. And I, I hope that they're pleased that we're moving in this direction. Okay, item number seven is council considerations. There are none. And item number eight is council subcommittee reports and meeting attendance reports. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Liu, since you're sitting the farthest away from me.
Thanks. I'd like to thank staff for the presentation and congratulations to all the winners this evening. And thank staff for a, the wonderful, um, um, salute to our veteran recognition and with, with the band and also the community coming out and South Point, uh, young South Point musicians. And, uh, we look forward to seeing everyone at, um, the windmill lighting. And please have a wonderful Thanksgiving with family and friends that also connect.
Thank you, Councilmember Liu. Councilmember Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before I get into comments, I'd like to ask, um, the city manager, perhaps if we could have something on a, a future agenda about, um, being fresh off of, of an election, about signing signs. The blight that's left after people have no responsibility to, to clean up after themselves, whether they're at the congressional, the state, or the local level, water boards. There's plenty of signs left out there. I don't think that the community should have to put up with that. I know that we're gonna get into the whole, uh, freedom of speech, but I think that we can craft something that says, this is, you're gonna put out a deposit in Diamond Bar, and if after X amount of time you haven't cleaned it up, we'll clean it up for you and we'll take it out of that deposit. So if we could see that on a future agenda, I would appreciate it. I'd like to say congratulations to all of our participants and winners of the Through My Lens contest. It's, it's a wonderful event. The Diamond Bar Community Foundation works in tandem with the city to provide the prize money. And you, you saw, I don't know that we've ever had that big of a turnout of people, but, uh, young and older alike, it was wonderful to see them out here. We, I appreciate Camille Jones and John Forbing being here tonight on behalf of the, the Diamond Bar Community Foundation. It's one of the many things that the foundation does. Uh, in fact, uh, we'll see one in a couple of weeks with the windmill lighting. Uh, want to also congratulate our Diamond Bar Restaurant Week winners. Who, who knew that a receipt would pay off and end up with a 55-inch TV? That's gonna go in a man cave, I assure you. We hope to see you all on, uh, the 4th, December 4th, for the windmill lighting, the first annual. So congratulations, Mayor. And Christine, if you could put that picture up for me, I would sure appreciate it. I had the opportunity to, with Contract Cities, honor Daryl Osby, Chief Daryl Osby of Los Angeles County Fire Department. Really a remarkable guy, if you ever had a chance to, to stand with him and talk with him. 38 years with the Fire Department, 11 as the first-ever African-American Chief of the Los Angeles County Fire Department. A well-deserved break is one of those times where you realize, you can look at him, he's a tall guy, you'd have to look up to him, but you look up to him and say, "Well done, good and faithful servant. Thanks for keeping us safe for as long as you did. We appreciate everything you did." Thank you, good night, and God bless you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to congratulate Councilmembers Tai and Chow on their reelection. I think it's pretty much a done deal. So well done, gentlemen. Along with the rest of the council, I had lunch at Maple Hill Elementary School with 84 students who received an award for fundraising abilities. And in addition to the lunch and getting to talk to the students, every one of the five of us had our faces painted. So, um, there's some good material out there if somebody wants to make fun of us. And the veterans event was terrific. The turnout was great. The program was very moving, and the South Point Orchestra was impressive as always. And our staff did a terrific job of putting this together. And everybody enjoyed themselves. Again, I'm hoping to see everybody at the windmill lighting. And finally, I really encourage you to take advantage of what we have here in Diamond Bar for our small businesses and buy a couple Hanukkah gifts or Christmas gifts and buy them locally with that. It'll save a nightmare.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lyons? Mayor Pro Tem Chow?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick and short report. So as, you know, I served on the LA Division for Cal City. So we've had multiple conversations with both Supervisor Solis and Supervisor Han and LA Metro Board about the proposed land bank pilot program. So just a quick summary. So basically, it's a, it's a program where LA County, through working with LA Metro, is able to acquire properties along LA River, um, which sounds good, and, and holding a land bank potentially for, uh, essentially, um, low-income housing. Uh, it sounds good on paper, yes, but it does take them away from local control, also exempt those properties from local, um, property tax. So, and it completely exempts them from local zoning and, um, and building codes. So we, as a division, have been fighting this, and we've had multiple conversations with Supervisor Solis and Supervisor Han and LA Metro Board. Actually, we spoke with, um, Mayor Tim Sandoval from Pomona, who served on LA Metro Board, as well as the staff members from Supervisor Solis Office. Uh, this morning, the board supervisor had a board meeting, and a motion was proposed by Supervisor Solis, and a substitute motion was proposed by Supervisor Han. And I called in, and a few of us called in to make public comments. And as a result, that item was tabled. So you guys are gonna go back and redraft the language and make sure that each city has a seat at the table and that we're part of the conversation before they go out and pick a property to acquire. So that's where we stand, and I'll keep my colleagues in, in our city, um, updated on that effort. With that, I'll say, uh, thank you and good night.
Okay, good report. Thank you. Keep up the, uh, keep up the work on representing us at the, um, the League of Cities. I also want to extend my congratulations to my colleague, Councilmember Tai and Mayor Pro Tem Chow for your successful reelection. Congratulations. Uh, you guys worked really hard and ran a really good race. So congratulations, and, um, as they say, four more years. And I also want to add my thanks to the, um, to the staff for a beautiful inspirational celebration of Veterans Day. Can you show us a photo of that? I thought that, that the, the music was great. The, um, this is a photo of, um, of the orchestra together with some of our veterans that, um, that attended. And it was just really inspirational to hear the music and hear the stories and the reasons of why our veterans serve us. And so we're really grateful for their service and, of course, their sacrifice. And it was a great time. Thank you for a really great celebration. The next photo that I'm, um, would like to share with you is an, an event that I attended with Mayor Pro Tem. is an event that I attended with Mayor Protam. And this is actual, a celebration of the year-end dinner of our actual men and women who are currently serving at the California Army National Guard. And this is the, one of the companies within the California Guard. And these are the active, the gentlemen in active and reserve duties that are serving in our country. And they, among this group, there are about 20, 25 that are getting, that just got orders to be deployed to Iraq. So these are the, you know, they're really out there serving us. And I really like this photo because, as you can see in the foreground, there are some family members. And we just always need to remember that when one of, when we have a serviceman, there is a family that also sacrifices so that they can serve us. So it was a very special occasion, and we just pray for their safe return, those that were, that are on their way out to Iraq. And then I also attended the Southern California Chinese-American Environmental, let me write, read this again, the Southern California Chinese-American Environmental Protection Association. So they call themselves the SCCAEPA. So thank goodness, because that's a mouthful. And congratulations, this was recently at our Diamond Bar Center. They installed their new Board of Officers, and the keynote speaker was Professor Jiang on the future perspective of climate change. It's really, we hear a lot about climate change and protecting our environment, and this is a group of Asian professionals that are working in this field, doing the hard work, doing the data, doing the analysis of what our future might look like. And more importantly, they are working to train the next generation of scientists in this field. So congratulations to them. And I also had the privilege of speaking to our Boy Scouts this past couple of weeks, the Boy Scouts Troop 777, regarding their civic duties and civil rights. So that was always a very fun thing to do. So it was a busy week, and I also invite everyone to attend the first annual windmill lighting event. I understand we have some choirs and, two choirs, as well as just a lot of festivities. So please be sure to join us on Sunday, December 4th, at 5:00 p.m. And with that, I will say good night and thank you, everyone, for joining us. And it's 7:39. Good night and see you. Oh, happy Thanksgiving as well. See you in December. Good night.